Good afternoon, everyone. I'm now going to call
Good afternoon.
June 30th, 2021, Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners meeting to order. This meeting is being conducted contingent upon the state legislature extending government budget, making its order to suspend certain divisions which were junked. Then our county commissioners will hold their regular meeting in Zoom option until at least, I'm sorry, extended until April 1st of 2022. So we have the best of both worlds, so to speak. If everyone would rise and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This meeting is properly called to order. I'll take the role Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Shea is present. We have a caller number three, minutes of the open session of June 23rd, 2021 for approval.
Quick question, Mr. Chairman, on the notes.
Yes.
Why do they say be a teleconference if we're here present live?
As I suppose.
Because it's also.
Okay, okay. I'll move approval. Second minutes.
Motion made in second to accept the session minutes of June 23rd, 2021, Holland Fair.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you. Public comment is next. Do we have anyone we've heard from that is interested in the public comment section? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll go to number five, Facilities Maintenance Capital Improvement Report, Corona Update, John McGowan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, John.
I don't have not much to say today, but thank God that COVID-19 is in the rearview mirror, hopefully. On the, on the project over here with the boiler, I talked to Dick Lee again yesterday, and he's still waiting, waiting for the results of the water test from the company that they sent that out to. But I spoke to him about, you know, getting ahead of the job by removing the existing boiler. And he told me that in order to do that, he has a company that comes in with the new boiler, they take the old boiler out and they put the new one in under the same contract. He said, if I wanted to do that, it'd probably cost more money, which I don't want to do that. But I, I think it would, he assured me that they can do it in one day. They take the, they come in, they take the old boiler out and they put the new boiler in, which I know, I know they did it before, so I'm assuming they'll be able to do it again. I just want to make you aware of that. I spoke with Scott Arnell this morning about the air purifiers for Superior Court. They're really, really working on these things. I mean, the court is, they want to open the courts, but they, they have to have these in place. And I know I mentioned to you before about getting some, you know, an engineer in there to see about putting permanent air exchanger in that superior. While we're doing this project on the dome, I know money's not, you know, it's tight, but I think we could get an engineer in there to see if it's feasible to, I know they could do it. I mean, any, anything can be done. But on, get a, try and get an idea of how much money it costs to do it. It'd be a have a, have a system come in and look it over. And it's something to think about anyway. I know that the courts are all over this air purifying and all the buildings that we have. Stoughton, Rentham, I ordered, like I said, I ordered about 30 of them. And I haven't, usually gives me an email and tells me when to pick them up, but I haven't got it off him yet. I'm going to call, talk to him again tomorrow. Because I was supposed to be at a meeting with him this morning, but I was doing something else. But I will keep on top of that. Stoughton Court, now I spoke to the director this morning, we were talking about it. I think he might have a little more information than I do on the placement of the steel, the new steel beams. They want to hot dip galvanize them or something like that. And all that does is add more time to the job. I mean, you can put them alongside the building on some side houses and paint them ourselves. You know, the contractor could do that. I know hot dip, you're sending them out and, and involves a lot of time. I know that for a fact. So it's, it's up to the, I think his name, Mark Tocchi. We'll see what he says about it. Quincy Roof, they're working on Quincy Roof yesterday. I know we had, I told you we had a problem down there with the rubber roofing lifts up when the wind gets under it somehow. And they're fixing that roof and hopefully it'll be done soon. Then they're going to go to Brookline Court next, and there, there's some slate work that needs to be done over there. And speaking of Brookline, Judge White is, today is retiring over there. Today is her last day. I didn't know if you knew or not. I found that out this morning. That's about it. I don't have anything else. If you have any questions, hopefully I can answer them.
Commissioners, do you have any questions to John before we go to Josh Cronin as a question?
To you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Stady.
Right, John, to the chair, I thought you had told us before, and I know it's preliminary, that in the Stoughton Court, only one side would require strengthening and the other side would be okay. Now it seems we're going to have to strengthen both sides. Can you explain that?
Yes. Well, that's what I was told. I was told originally by the, the structural guy that the bearing wall is on unit number two.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't need anything.
Yeah.
And now I find out today, yesterday, that they're going to put some iron, reinforce that a little bit too.
So could I ask you a follow up?
I'm only going by, Commissioner, I'm only going by what the structural guy says and the engineer.
Right, we want to, we want to do it safe. We do.
Yes, and we want to expedite it too. We want to get it done.
Right, well, the hope we have was to.
Getting a life of its own here.
We can have some trials going on. So do you have some comments?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. I just want to, you know, follow up on that, that's all. All right, appreciate your work.
Understandably, yep.
On this subject of Stoughton Court, Director Cronin.
So following up on John's report, I spoke with Mark Tocchi today, following my conversation with John McGowan this morning, Mr. Tocchi made himself available. And to your point, Mr. Commissioner, he, he did indicate that there are two rooftop units servicing different parts of the building. The area that is intact or requires little or no structural improvements can receive an HVAC unit installation. That item will service the courtroom and the general public area.
Yeah.
The other area that John's referring to services the air circulation and the chief probation officer's area, as well as some offices in the lower level. So they'll experience some delay. Mr. Tocchi said, I hate giving you some estimates of time. We need to understand specifically what's required from the engineer, but he's comfortable telling us today that within two to three weeks, and I'll update you each week, Commissioner, he hopes to have the proper area for the HVAC installed to service the courtroom. And then the following piece will, as John McGowan pointed out, will take some time due to this more detailed and involve structural improvement.
Okay.
So we're looking at about a two to three week window to get the courtroom air online. The other area will take some time. Proper timeline is forthcoming. We'll share that with you probably next week as we get to it. So this all happened within, I'm sorry, this all happened within the last couple of business days, and you could see from the email string I shared with you that we're trying to put the pressure on both the structural engineer and the general contractor.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, no questions. Thank you.
Any other questions, John? Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Just a couple of.
Thank you, Commissioners.
General facility updates, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner, Director Cronin.
So thank you, sir. The Dedham Superior Court Dome Project, as you know, you were the contractor earlier this month. We are, we are currently trending towards a Zoom entry meeting with all the parties on July 7th. Still putting together all the stakeholders. The vendor was reaching out to all the contacts yesterday, but we will, we will begin with a, an open dialogue about what the contractor is expecting the timeline to be, how impactful the project will be for the general public, and the, the work of conducting business within the structure while it's being renovated. More on that to follow, but the meeting is scheduled for July 7th. And then finally, Nancy, who is on our call, and I had been talking about follow-up quotes for the Rentham and Stoughton boilers, she's going to be working on getting updated quotes for those two buildings. We'll have those presented shortly. Those items are currently not funded, but we'll bring the items forthcoming, potential future capital, capital needs. And then finally, last week, I had the walkway up to Walston Course, met with Carl Minor as well as Dana. Buckley and I toured the course. We saw three walkways that golfers use. All three are in need of immediate improvements. There were some plans within the bond bill that's paying for the dome structure project. Those funds are no longer available. However, working with Nancy, we're going to try to identify additional space to begin those projects, but we need updated quotes. So she's working with the vendor out at Walston, get updated quotes, and then we'll find a place for the money, bring it forward to you to plan the project accordingly. I think that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, John.
What time is the July 7th meeting over here?
I don't have a date yet.
You have a date another time.
Excuse me, time, that's right.
Okay, I think we're all set, John. Thank you very much, if you haven't already gone. Number six.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
We're right on schedule here. We got three appointments this morning, and I see all three gentlemen are here. The first one is a 1:15 appointment with Dedham officials regarding Dedham Square parking. John, I'm going to invite you to sit up here with us.
Okay, thank you.
Introduce yourself, and if anyone is on the call on Zoom, we'll introduce them themselves.
Yeah.
Or you can. Mr. Chairman. Start right up. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think Leon Goodwin, the new, well, he's no longer new. He's been with us for a year and a half now. Leon Goodwin, I believe, is on the call, and the Chair of our Select Board, Demetria Sullivan, I think is dialed. They're both dialing in on Zoom, so I just wanted to mention.
We're a minute or two early, but is Leon on? And Demetria?
Hi, I'm Demetria Sullivan. I'm here.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
We're going to have John start, and then when Leon comes on, we'll introduce Leon too. And we'll go right through this.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. So one thing I want to start on is I want to apologize that I'm not more prepared. I'd hope to have a memo, and I will follow up with Mr. Cronin and, and get y'all a memo with an overview of all the things that we're doing on parking, but don't want to take up your time now to do that. And we'll discuss parking, but I'll follow up in more details in writing, and I'll share that through, through Mr. Cronin. I did want to, one reason I am behind is we've been working on a project just down the street here at 600 High Street, and I wanted to share with, with the Commissioners. I'll leave you these, these are presentation slides from, and we don't have to go through them now, because I know it's not on your agenda, but I just wanted to, to share these with, with you so that you're in the loop and know what's going on. This is 600 High Street Police Station Site is, and this is the, this is the, a poster that we've been using to alert people. This is the property where the police station site currently exists. There's the Verizon Building. Here's the Historical Society and the Post Office, and we're sitting just right up here. So this is a really important area, and we've been working on it for a couple of years. Since the Public Safety Building sort of got approved and funded, there've been a question from the Select Board about what, what happens to this. And so we've been doing a great deal of community engagement. We've had, I think, six community engagement meetings at night and during the day, and the last one was this morning with the merchants. So that's one reason we've been spread a little bit thin, and I'm not as prepared to talk about parking as I wish I were, but I do want to touch on it, and, and then I hope this is the first of, of multiple meetings where we can, you know, representatives of the town, like Select Board Member Sullivan and Leon Goodwin can join and, and just, you know, keep an open line of communication with Commissioners about what, what's going on in the square and what we're working on. We appreciate that collaboration. So if you have questions about the, the police station project, I'm happy to follow up with, with you, and we will have additional community engagements regarding, you know, that process and what's going to happen down the street. I'm sure you may have an interest. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And with regards to parking, I think you may have noticed that we did install parking meters along High and Court Street over the past year. Those went live earlier this, this month, so they've been online for just under a month. And we're seeing different behaviors happen. I don't want to, you know, all that, that work was preceded by a great deal of policy and operational, I think, conversations with Select Board members over the years to look at some improvements. We, when the Dedham Square Improvement Project, which predates me, happened 10 years ago, they did install a parking management plan and, or system, and it really was not staff, and it did not work very well because of that. So we are working to improve that. We've gone with this MPS Company for these meters, and, you know, I think we're seeing a lot of improvement in behaviors. There's some things going on in other areas that we're going to be dealing with, but I wanted to allude to the, the Select Board because of all the policy that work that's gone on. I think we've addressed and made some improvements to parking in the, in the square. There were a lot of complaints that one hour parking was not a sufficient amount of time for on-street parking, so we moved that to two-hour parking. So far, that seems to be good. And we'll continue to monitor the situation. We also are looking this summer to move forward with sort of Phase Two. We call this the Court Zone of the parking area. We're going to move with Phase Two, which is more of the square zone, so the more commercial areas of Washington Street and East. And that said, as you're aware, we, we also have our new outdoor dining spaces, which are very popular, so we've had to sort of bob and weave a little bit and figure out what are the policies around those and how seasonably are we going to be doing, you know, those, those seating areas outdoors. So we've been adjusting to that, and then I'm working with Demetria Sullivan on a, figuring out a policy for our off-street lots, which are currently, because of changes in one part of the system, you see behaviors change in other parts of the system. So our Keystone Lot, which you're familiar with, has about 138 spaces in it, is, is getting jammed up. And so we're looking at what policies do we use to manage usage of that lot? We want it to, we want it to be fair and equitable. We want people to have access to it, whether they're a shopping or a vendor or a resident or whatever. So we are working right now on that and be happy to keep, you know, keep you aware of that. I think one of the things that we're looking at is the different audiences of parking or the different consumers of parking, whether they're coming to the square for business with the county, or they're coming to shop or eat, or do, you know, historical research at the society. There's, there's a lot of reasons to come to the square, and we hope to create more. But I think what we want to do is work with the county on those demands and see, you know, what can we do? And if there are collaborations we can do with the county over time, I know you all have a great, I think you have about 370 spaces in your, in your multiple lots, which is a good, a good amount. And, and there's also a lot of other, of private parking off-street in different parts of Dedham Square that we would like to figure out how to open up and share better, so that when people come to Dedham Square, the, the last thing they think is, I can never find parking here. We always want people to think, find parking. So with that said, I just wanted to really introduce, this is all work that we're, we're doing now, and I don't want to, I'll, I'll send you the weeds. I won't get into them now. But if there are, Demetria, did you have comments you wanted to share with the Commissioners regarding parking?
At this time, I don't. I think that you really gave them a great synopsis of really what we're trying to achieve and the partnership that we'd like to achieve, so that, you know, Dedham Square is really a destination place that people will, will find parking. And we do have all our different audiences, the employees, people coming in to use different sections of the square that we would like to accommodate. So I do thank you. I thank you, John. I thank you Commissioners for your time on this.
Oh, and I wanted to follow up with one item. I am addressing, I think there was a complaint by the Registrar's Office about the placement of one of our Wi-Fi poles. We are looking to relocate that as part of Phase Two, because we didn't anticipate that problem. It's a, it's a change order that the town's going to be paying for, but it, we're wrapping it into Phase Two. So most of the work of Phase Two will be down on Washington Street and East, but we will have, either it's DPW or our subcontractors will be coming up to relocate the pole so that it's not right in front of the entrance to the register. I'm sorry.
Timeline on that.
We are having our first sort of operational meeting a week after next, and I'm happy to have you or others from the county come and sit down with us and we can walk through that. Most importantly, just let us know what the timelines, we'll share that with our, our partners at the Register. Okay, that'd be great. No, I just wanted, I had a note here. I'm like, don't forget to tell them. We are, we needed to wait until the new fiscal year to get to that.
Good. I think that, you know, that had come up when we noticed the change right from the get-go. Is, is Leon on yet?
Yes.
Okay, welcome, Leon. We just want to say hello.
Well, thank you for having me, and thank you for having us, and it's nice to see you over Zoom, and looking forward to attending a meeting in person and also meeting, meeting as well with Mr. Cronin.
Well, I'm going to turn, ask my other, my Commissioners if they have any comment, and I have a comment at the end, and I think we should make this a frequent agenda item, our relationship with the town, because it's so important. But before I finish up, Commissioner Collins?
I'm all set for now.
Okay, how about Commissioner Stady?
If I may, Leon, are you the manager?
Yes.
Okay, I never met you before, so nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well. Yeah.
I wanted to commend Dedham in general on doing a great job during COVID. I frequented here and was able to do a lot of nice things despite the pandemic. You did a great job helping out your local businesses. And like any town, my own included, parking's a premium. You can never get enough. You can never get enough. So anyway, I'm sure that all of us will work with you to try to help you in that way too. But for Cronin allow, what's going on with the movies? Hollywood keeps coming here. Can we get a walk-on pod? It is amazing. It is great. Hollywood likes denim, right? This is good.
It is, I think it's the architecture, you just.
Yeah, it's great. No, it's great. Do we need to act on this, Mr. Chairman?
This request? I have it on.
Okay.
Under other items, right?
Okay, great. All right.
Request.
Nice to meet you and look forward to working with you, is my card.
Okay. Along the same, along the same lines, although we all served in one form or another with Franny O'Brien, and, you know, Dedham was always number one in his mind, and then, of course, drilled into us, and we come from other towns, but it's clear from way back, when you come to Dedham, you're, you're, you're so impressed with this whole cause, this whole High Street group, as I say, I'm always very interested in what we can do. And on today's, well, earlier, Director Cronin mentioned that we're going to do some repairs on Superior Court roof. Now, we bid it twice, because the first, the first, we wanted to check the first bid, but it's over a million dollars just for the roof, and it's not even replacing it. It's just bringing it up to painting it, et cetera, et cetera. We always make comment in our meetings because it always comes up about what a valuable, that these buildings are and how beautiful they are and how we're totally committed to doing all we can, and sometimes even a little more, hopefully, to make this portion of Dedham even better than it is. But it's so historical, so beautiful, and, you know, deserves every bit of money that we can scrape together to put into it. I do believe that parking is a key issue. Sometimes the management of parking, certainly behind the registry, we have a lot of spots that perhaps we can do a better job touting it or telling people it's there. Some people get comfortable to park in front of the door. Not everyone can park in front of the door. We're aware of that. Our other little lot here behind the Dance School, which is probably the Congregational Church at one time, before my time, that's pretty full all the time. I think generally it's employees, both of this building and the Dedham Court, Dedham District Court. But when you take the full walk-around behind the registry, there's, there's plenty of parking here, and we want to work with you. I know former Director Mullin was, had negotiated or had started working on some other items, which we're more than happy to continue. But a meeting never goes by that we don't have some comment about the Superior Court. All positive, but like everything else, it's very expensive in today's market to keep these, these beautiful old buildings up to snuff. The Registry of Deeds, the last several years, has really, really, we've done a lot of work with the Registrar O'Donnell in bringing that up, and we'll continue to do it, and we'll continue to do more on these other two buildings. But the Superior Court seems to be the prize here. I think that's what attracts the movie company, but I don't know.
It is beautiful.
And, but, but all the rumors you hear about new courts and new this, it is, we, we, I think this board knows what the Superior Court and what everything means to downtown Dedham. There's no question about it. And, I mean, everyone in Dedham goes by this street at some point or other every day. It's pretty impressive, and we want to continue that way. So we'll, we'll open up what was started briefly last year, and we'll, we'll make it better. And hopefully we'll have some other good news later in the summer, Leon, for you, and we'll be over to see you.
Absolutely. We'd love to welcome you over to the new Town Hall, give you a tour.
You're there, because you always gone. I see in the morning when I come in, right?
Absolutely. We're in the new Town Hall. It's a beautiful building. We have the room that's named after Commissioner O'Brien. We're very proud of, that he was very proud of as well. So anytime you would like to come on over here, let me know, and we'll give you a personalized tour.
That's the, that's the Ames Building now.
That's correct. The Ames Building on Washington Street.
Love to come over. All right. When you have our word, we can expand this and, and.
Keep talking.
You know, now we've lost, again, our, you've lost your, the greatest agent you ever had, Francis O'Brien, but we'll, we'll make up for it with the three of us.
Yep, try.
Be great.
Nice to meet you.
Everything that the town did, that Franny, Franny was intimately involved, and we learned.
We appreciate it, and we do hope this, the 600 High Street will help tie Dedham Square, you know, all the way up to Court Street better, so that there will be a, a better pedestrian experience for people, and also a place to meet, you know, we'll meet you at the, at the Green or the Square, whatever it's called. I think that, that'll be helpful.
So 600 is going to be tied. I didn't read all of this. It's going to become a public building then.
Well, we, we, so the process is, we were sort of really just providing as an advisory committee of 20 people from across town, and I was, I was ad hoc as a staff member on that, providing a recommendation to the Select Board about whether to proceed, and then, you know, and if the Select Board says, yes, this is the direction we want to go, then it would go to Town Meeting. So we're, we're pretty early in the process, and we're still doing engagement, and, but I think, you know, we want to engage with you on it as well, because it is, it is, it is, it is an asset that I think, you know, with all these other assets along High Street.
Are you looking at Town Meeting like next year to act on it?
I think we're looking in the spring.
Spring, yes.
And we're looking at a, I think it's a land and water. I can't remember the exact, we're looking at a state grant to help us.
Okay, anything else?
Just a quick clarification. So the Town Meeting will approve, hopefully, the, the request for funding, the demolition of the building and the repurposing of the space. Is there a timeline of when that work might be done? One of the things that, that Leon is discussing with, with the current contractor, Commodore Builders, who is our CM at Risk, or anyway, that, that whole project is, when we eventually are going to be having, taking down the old fire station at the corner of Bryant Street, if we can tie those two projects in together at the same time and perhaps save the taxpayers some money by taking both those buildings down, then the demolition might happen a little bit faster. That would be, I think, in 2022 still. But, but I'm not, it doesn't live it up in the air.
Okay.
At this time, but we will, yeah, I think, you know, we'll keep, we'll keep talking.
Okay.
Thank you again, and for the invitation.
Thank you.
Future meetings, we appreciate it.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, John. Demetria and Leon, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for having us.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, 1:30, we have an introduction of Patrick Hughes, who's our County Severe.
Higgins.
Higgins. Why do I call you Hughes? Higgins. It's Patrick Higgins. Pat, come on up.
I was here for that presentation.
I'm sorry, you wanted to say, Pat, Pat, have a seat.
Take care, Tony.
Tommy, Tommy.
I advise you.
Who's our advisory board member from Dedham?
Yes, Tom.
Yes, Tom.
Tom, any comments?
It's, it's about $3.5 million job for that building. That's the first estimate. So it's going to be, you know, I don't know how they're going to pay for it. It's, you know, it's not all, they're going through all these hearings. Sure. You know, so.
Yeah.
Some want to park and some want to park a lot. So it's going to be a lot of discussion by the time it's all done, but right now the first estimate is about three and a half million dollars.
We want to do everything we can, but I bet we won't want to.
So.
Determine what's going there.
Something's going to happen.
Oh, yeah.
I think the group more likes to park, but this area wants to park. The other side doesn't want to park.
Are you involved in the, in the planning on this committee? Tom at all? Have you family? No?
No.
Have you got enough people on the town?
I got enough, they wouldn't want me in that one community. So that, that's a big issue.
Well, you've mentioned, you've mentioned park to me, parking to me for about two years.
Yeah, and you know, you're going to put a park there where people are going to park their cars. That's, that's the issue I really have.
You never have enough parking, right?
People on here want to take a walk to the park with their cabbages and everything else, okay? People from I live, they got to park on the Keystone, cross two, three streets to get to a park. I'm saying it's going to be Tommy approval is.
Yeah, interesting.
How they pay for it, it'll be through cash or bond. They not even discussed yet, but it's a, it's a big hit item. That's all I'm saying. It's got a lot more conversation.
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Tommy, nice to see you.
Be well. Take care.
Okay, I'm sorry, Patrick Higgins.
Hughes.
Patrick, as you know, is our department head in New County Surveyor. I'm going to have Patrick just say a few words and, uh, I will say that in the interview process, we, I met Patrick. I was doing my due diligence and, uh, I received favorable reports from a lot of people that have worked with Patrick in the past, including at the school, including, uh, some folks in Quincy and, and, and a lot of present employees. So it pretty much sealed the deal for me, but welcome Patrick and we just want to say hello.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. It's a pleasure to meet you in person.
Okay.
Through you, I'd like to thank the county commissioners. Um, greatly appreciate this opportunity given to return to the.
Say, coming back.
Return to Norfolk County Engineering Department and, um, to continue the high quality of work that the, they have a long history of providing to 28, uh, communities within Norfolk County and, and looking forward to getting my feet on the ground and getting some projects rolling.
I know you're aware and I think it's came up at the interview process, but, you know, with money being tight and, 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 and some, some departments shrinking, particularly the engineering department, I went back and looked in the nineties, more like 12, 14 employees and going back even further. There were more and they were very, it used to, it, it comes up at budget time and it would come up before the advisory board. Now, I've only been here five years, but I learned very quickly. The cities and towns really like and are fans of the engineering department. So there's no question. When you're talking about cuts, I don't think there'll be any cuts in the engineering department. We're actually trying to build it up a little. And even beyond your hiring because, uh, there's plenty of work and, uh, the work that gets done, uh, we get brave reviews all the time. Uh, Milton, Milton's a big fan, Brookline, everyone. And, uh, it's been drilled into our head the last couple of years. So, uh, the other first step, since, uh, Joe McNichols has left and, uh, we're glad that you can hit the ground running. So if you have any questions with us, as you know, we're here every week. I don't think it's necessary to come every week, but if you want to, or have any questions at all, please reach out to John and us. I know you've met John, so you almost started at the same time.
Yeah, maybe.
Sure.
Some remarks briefly, uh, indeed I did, Mr. Chairman, um, met with Patrick and his staff earlier this week. Uh, it was a pleasure. Um, the four very solid engineers who provide, as you said, uh, strong service, uh, against strong demand for the communities within Norfolk County. One of the areas of interest that, um, Patrick and I will be talking about is, um, collecting data associated with the work and the services that they provide so that we can measure, uh, what those requests are against the resources that are available. Um, I won't get into the details, but Patrick is in sync and he understands the need to start building up this level of customer service data, um, so that we can have an understanding of what we need going forward. Speaking of which, in FY22, I understand the budget that this commission approved, um, did approve a position, uh, for the engineering department. Um, it is currently an FY22 position, so it's not before you for consideration. But Patrick's going to take some time to assess the profile of that job, develop a proposed job description for the commission to assess and consider for, um, approval. Um, we'll be talking about that probably after Abraham's report gets released within the next month or so, so that we can give Patrick a little bit of, um, runway to get going, uh, generate some detail and job description and also develop those metrics for service. So, um, he's got his hands full, but want to say again, it was a pleasure meeting Patrick and his staff. Um, Norfolk County's in great hands and it's clearly a growth area as far as I'm concerned. So trending up.
Very excited to see you come back, Patrick. I know you did a good job, uh, when you were here before and I expect that we expect you to do a better job in the position you're in. And that's great to see that you're going to look into expanding your department. We had, uh, survey results. I think it was our last meeting and, uh, clearly engineering scored very well in most towns, if not all of them, in terms of what they provide, the working relationship and the professionalism and level of service. So I got a little challenge for you. What I want to say is I'd like to see you even improve on that and expand. I think we all would like to see engineering even take the next step, whatever that might be, and maybe adding it to the department. But also, I mean, maybe perhaps think about, maybe you can enlist some college students to do some in-service. That you can get some that work with you and that way they're getting hands-on experience, but also giving you the extra hands to do more projects. Think some things outside the box. I know you will and I mean, the sky's the limit and just wish you well. And great to have you back.
Thank you.
Great to have you back.
Thank you, Commissioner State. Appreciate it. Happy to be back. It's, it's good to see you all in person.
Commissioner Collins, any questions or comments? Patrick, welcome back.
Thank you. Good, good to see you, Commissioner.
I saw your name on the list.
That's why we noticed we talked about was an internship program.
Oh, that's interesting. Great minds. See that?
It's a great area if you're into the engineering space of surveying data. I mean, Norfolk County.
Wow.
Great records. Incredible experience across the street.
Yeah, I mean, why not? You know, I mean, you know.
The old records, you mean, it's a, measure things by a boulder and the tree.
It's brought into the vault, Mr. Chairman. The vault has incredible information here. Very impressive.
Good stuff.
Legal description is a, it holds, you know, the boundary is the boundary. So it holds no matter what it is. You just have to put it on the ground.
We'd be remiss though, Mr. Chairman, if we didn't give a little kudo, John, for helping out in the time that he was shared. No, Mike, I'm sorry.
Mike, I'm Johnny.
Right.
Mike, for the job you did before you got on board. You did a very good job of keeping this together.
Definitely bridge the gap between, um, Joe McNichols retirement and Mike, uh, on board and the whole department actually pulled together Robert Forrest and.
But you all seemed to get on pretty good there.
We do.
Good group, yeah. I've dropped in a few times. It's going to be good. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Good luck, Patrick. Be over to see you. Thank you. Okay, we have another appointment, 1:45 with Dale Kurtz, our veterans agent, and, uh, this is on the other end of the spectrum. Dale, come on up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dale has been with us eight or nine years. It's no question that he provided valuable service to our veterans. I don't know the real history of the whole history, but I think this was a grant originally and then uh, Peter was here when Dale came aboard, so he could probably comment and he's done a lot of great work in particularly in the town of Franklin and the town of Avon. But a week or two ago, we got a letter from Dale that he intends to retire this August. Yes, sir. August 27. And, uh, it probably puts in lack of a better word, our veteran service capabilities into, how about limbo? That's got nothing to do with, uh, the great work that Dale has done. We learned quite frankly, uh, of value, but it is, I think the general law requires every city in town has access to a veteran service agent. Of course, the bigger towns have a standalone agent, but some of the small towns share agents, et cetera. We were able to fill that gap. Dale did a great job. So if you have any comments, Dale, we, we wish you well. We'll see you again before August for sure, but that's why we put you on the agenda today. Sure. I have a little history of how this did come about. It was through a grant and I was not the first, uh, veteran service advocate for the county. I was, uh, preceded by, uh, a young law student who, excuse me, upon graduation from law school and back into the Navy. At that time I was volunteering, uh, for the VSO in Franklin because I'd retired twice, failed at it miserably and my wife told me I had to find something to do. Uh, so through that I was urged to apply for this job, which I did the day before the the deadline, the deadline to apply. And here I am. The challenge, uh, at that time was to get out and talk to the different VSOs, find out what the gaps were. And we actually created some training programs for the VSOs. And I would hold a training program about every quarter. A couple of years and maybe a little bit more frequent. I know there's one year, I think it was every four months. But we, I'd bring speakers in and we'd gather VSOs and I would get somewhere between, uh, 15 to 20 VSOs would come. So that was, that was good. It did fill a gap that existed at the time. What then happened was, uh, Frank Hagerty, who is the, uh, chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Avon, approached me and asked if I would take on the VSO role in Avon. Because for whichever reason, uh, the contract for the VSO there was not going to be renewed. It was a part-time position. There's about 4,400 people in Avon. I said, sure, I'd be glad to do it. And Dan Matthews said, go ahead. We got it approved by the state. So I became the VSO for Avon, which was a free service we provided to the town of Avon at the time. Uh, subsequent to that, uh, six years ago, Bob Faye opted to retire from Franklin. Franklin offered me that job because I did spend about a day a week with Bob because he needed help. I, I would spend time with other VSOs involved, but Bob was the one who most needed some assistance, uh, due to just a number of issues. Franklin offered me the job. It was a full-time job at 30 hours. And I came back and talked to Dan and said, you offered me a job. I don't know if I want it. He, he is the one that said, hey, why don't we come up with a deal? Let's see if that, you know, if we can work something with the state. I contacted Director of Benefits, uh, at DVS, Evan McCrenicolas, and said, hey, they want me to take on the Franklin job and keep Avon. He said, you can't do it. So why not? It's full-time. I said, Kevin, it's 30 hours. That's not full-time. Evan, you can't tell the town what they did, what they determined to be full-time. It took about a week and this, he came back and said, the state has no standing. They didn't approve it because the towns are not contiguous. But, uh, they took no standing. Uh, and subsequent to that, I've had a number of discussions with Evan. He said, you, you've set a new precedent for how to get around things and get it done. So I've been privileged to have, uh, the opportunity to serve those two towns. And I, I've said to people, this is the best job I've ever had. Not the most lucrative. Okay. Actually, the pension I receive from my insurance company is greater than anything else I receive as far as income goes. Uh, so that, that's nice. Uh, but it is, it's a great job. Uh, now where do we move forward? Uh, this isn't about me. It's about the circumstances. How are we going to replicate that as a county? I don't think we can, uh, to have a town. You know, Avon is going to need somebody and we do have to solve that problem. Uh, I've talked to Gregory Enos and suggested he talk to Stoughton and Randolph as those are two contiguous towns that could be of assistance. He doesn't want to go to Brockton. I want to send him to Brockton. It's too big. It's, it's too heavily challenged as it is. Uh, Holbrook, uh, is not a solution at this time. So if he's looking at that, I don't know what move he's going to take. Well, Franklin has, uh, passed the authorized the town administrator to terminate the agreement with, uh, the county. So that you'll be receiving that notice sometime soon. That was approved last Wednesday. They want to take more control and they need a full-time person. The Franklin job is full-time now. Uh, and, and I'm talking 40 hours a week, uh, plus.
Wow.
It, it's busy. And part of that's our own doing, uh, this morning. If someone calls my office and if it's about anything other than chapter 115, I take the call. I took calls from Duxbury, took, uh, calls from Norwood, uh, one from Franklin, Bellingham this morning. I just, we take the calls, we take the action. I, I don't turn them away because as a VSO, I can handle anything other than chapter 115 for anybody. Chapter 115 is restricted to the town. So I can only handle chapter 115 for Avon and Franklin. So how would we move forward? Uh, we've got some challenges. No, I was bored, uh, before I took, even after I had Avon. Avon, you know, it took a little bit to get started and I had some, it kept me busy, but not busy. And I, I, I talked to Dan and to Frank that, you know, I've got to find other ways to expand this because it's, it's not, you know, it's not full-time. I felt like I was taking money that I hadn't earned. I did a lot of public speaking. I went out and talked to Kiwanis. I talked to, uh, Elksay. Uh, I went to the Rotary Club here in Dedham, uh, the Sunshine, uh, the Sunrise Rotary Club. And we started an annual job, uh, placement, uh, event. So we did some things, but again, it wasn't challenging. When it, when Franklin came on, uh, that changed. So how would we move forward? Uh, we've got challenges budget-wise. Okay, I'm going to have three weeks of vacation. I don't know, four, five weeks worth of sick time. We're talking eight weeks. You can't hire somebody. You know, that's a different issue, but it's something I think we need to address. That if you have a command service, because you can't go time without being able to process chapter 115 benefits for people. You know, they get paid every month and somebody has to do that. So it's something that, you know, I've talked to John about. John, here, here's a present, okay? You've got a budget issue that I, I think we need to look at in total.
Well, I think, uh, key part of that, Dale, is what Avon plans to do. Franklin's, Franklin's made their vote.
Right.
So do we have a sense of Avon's timing?
I, I, I talked to Gregory, uh, again last week. I've not connected with him yet this week. I was going to call him today, uh, probably on my drive home, maybe even stop back to Avon to see him. Uh, continue to find out whether or not he's connected with Stoughton. That was his primary target. Are there towns out there that need help? Holbrook i- is a challenge. Uh, I don't know how well they're served. I heard just this morning that Bellingham may be retiring, uh, the VSO there. As I've mentioned before to John and to the group, I believe, uh, Norfolk has approached Franklin about, uh, going together as a district. Again, they're contiguous, so they don't need that overlapping organization to bring it together.
Did Norfolk write to us? Didn't we talk about that at a meeting?
I thought they came to Franklin.
To Franklin, okay. Oh, so we've been part of the Franklin contract.
Yeah, if they.
Okay.
If they move forward, they're talking next year.
Okay.
Uh, possibly.
Okay.
And depends upon how that goes. Uh, but if they brought Norfolk in, then they could also bring Meliss in because Meliss is not contiguous with Franklin. Medway, even though they're in a district, they, uh, may not be satisfied with the arrangements they have. So you need a large town, city, Franklin is a city, to be the hub. You can't, they're not, we are not successful where we take small towns. Oxbridge and Bellingham are served by the VSO, a same VSO. He's part-time in both towns. All right. Uh, I can't tell you the last time I was able to call him and get a phone answer. Uh, you know, because it's part-time and it's part-time salary and you're not going to be there all the time. So if you have a, a larger community as the hub, you can bring those other towns in and we need to do that. I've talked with, again, McCrenicolas about the fact that our veteran population is decreasing. Doesn't mean the workload's decreasing because what they are bringing is our more complicated issues. As our veterans age, we get into the most complicated benefit program we have, which is called aid and attendance. It's. As our veterans age, we get into the most complicated benefit program we have, which is called Aid and Attendance. It's. It requires about six forms, uh one of them's twelve pages long. So it, it's time-consuming, it's. You can't now, Air Fat Night. He's doing a great job. We still talk at least once or twice a week.
Right.
Uh the great thing about Air Fat is about two weeks into the job, I was talking with him and said. So you worked for Home Base, you know, that uh Mass General. How's this comparison? I didn't have a clue word in there on how this, what this job was. You have to be an accountant, you have to be an investigator, you have to be a social worker, you have to be, I mean, there's so many different things you have to be in order to. Do it, but it's fun. It, it's very frustrating. When you're not able to do something or when someone doesn't understand the word no. Uh but it's also very rewarding when it is, I've been able to do recently. Had a guy, I used to play basketball with this guy, okay? I mean, back when we could still jump. And. He had, he was a, a blue water Navy guy. His claim was to, you know. Denied because it was blue water, reapplied, reapplied. Got him approved. It was approved at about thirty percent. I knew his illness was more significant. He did. Three weeks ago now, uh right before Memorial Day. So maybe four weeks ago, he got approved a hundred percent total and permanent disability. That means his wife, if she survives him, will have benefits if he passes. That is huge. Those are, those are the wins that really excite you. Okay, well, I mean, this is a good news, bad news situation. I mean, probably good news for you retiring, bad news for us, but. We're probably going to have to reassess in view of everything. I mean, we. We wish you well. We know where to find you, nothing is going to burn you, but. Be- because of your reputation and because this program has been established and functioning under you. I'm sure within a month of you leaving, some towns will lose their VSO and call up and say, where's Dale? We don't look forward to that call, but you know, if. We, we, we've got to get together and discuss this enough on the way down the road, but we have to. You know, we have some budget considerations so that you can. Uh separate, good check, whatever's on to move, certainly. We wish you well.
Yeah.
But again, yesterday, I mean, I was talking to George Puchard yesterday and he mentioned, hey, Dale's leaving. I said, yeah. No, Byron White, George being one of the. Veteran Service Officers in Quincy, with two judges.
Yep.
And uh so certainly your reputations for C H U D. Those are the vicissitudes and we're going to deal with it like we deal with everything else. Well, as a full Colonel told me when I was a junior captain. His wife and mine worked together at the local hospital, put his finger in the water and pulled it out. This glass and said, that's how indispensable any of us are. You know, the water doesn't change. It's still the same level, so. Someone will come in and fill the roles much better than I.
Well, it's been great to work with you. I always show us laundry because I know my view of you in terms of what I knew as an advisory board member. And now in the short time here and then hearing my own talents comment and seeing your work, it's, it's going to be a big, 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 high, big position to fill. So we wish you well. We have a lot of plans that we told it for the meeting, so.
Are you aware that Dale's a West Point graduate?
I just found that out. And we were talking before the meeting. Very impressed. Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Impressive. Yeah. He told me he's got a ticket to the game.
That's right. We talked about it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Exactly. Well, wish you well.
Okay, any other comments for Dale?
Oh, you did. Thank you, Dale.
I'm going to miss you.
Thanks.
Okay, Dale, it's here before August.
Like you're just um on uh the platitudes. I, I've met with Dale now a couple of times and I completely agree with the. Group's assessment of his skills and commitment as a veteran service officer. He's um clearly a, a asset to the key uh to the county. I'm going to miss you. I will probably, as the chairman indicated, track you down questions, but the future of the program is still up in the air. It is in limbo. We'll assess it. Uh we'd very much like to continue some level of similar service, but we have to have. A willing partner uh to get there and that's the part that's still beyond our reach and we'll work on that in the next several weeks. Um but uh clearly you're in class of your own and uh my only regret is I don't have any more time to work with you because I think I really would enjoy it, but. I'm my very best to you as well.
I would just say that I'm very impressed with uh the way you've come into the county and the things you're addressing. So thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Best to you. Take care, Dale. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Okay, moving right along, we're going to go to number seven, old business. Do we have any old business? Okay, thank you. Um if I don't have any objection, I'm going to leave personnel for the end of the meeting. It's number eight. I'd like to go. If no objection down to number nine, and then we can, if we need to devote more time to personnel at the end, we can. Number nine is payroll and expense warrants for the period.
Maybe sign them up. Uh actually, do you want to do the motion on each part of the expenses we have up?
I don't have them. That I, I can only get them.
I didn't see them.
Are they, maybe they were in the pile and someone may have moved it. Are they in that pile? Cause I usually get a copy of the woman or something.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to move the following. Uh for payroll county, twenty-one dash five-two, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars, forty-one cents. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? unanimous next.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman, uh payroll school, twenty-one dash fifty-two, four hundred and twenty. Thousand, one ninety-one point eight-five. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Next.
Third payroll school, twenty-one dash fifty-two, parentheses, twenty-six point one, uh three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, fourteen cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh that's unanimous.
Uh second payroll school, twenty-one dash five-two, uh parentheses, twenty-six point two. The amount of fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, thirty-nine cents.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Two to go. Uh expense for the school, twenty-one dash one-two B, in the amount of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars, eighteen cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, expense for the county of June fifth, twenty-one, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. And sixty-six cents. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous.
There we go. Thanks for helping that.
Number ten, bid openings. We have none.
Good.
Number eleven, contract awards. Architectural services as needed for a period of one year. With an optional renewal of four one-year terms. Who's got Nancy? Thank you, Nancy. We have, we're ready to go on this today, right?
Yes.
This is. For arch- architectural services as needed for a one-year period. And if, as I said earlier, in four renewal one-year terms, this is standard procedure and the. Award is to, this is the golf course, by the way. The wa- ward, award is to. I never can pronounce this company.
Mungame.
Mungame, N-U-N-G-E-A-M, golf design. I understand they've been with us for over ten years.
Yes.
Any questions before we sign this? Okay, all in favor of appointing a Mungame golf design as our. For architectural services as needed basis at the Boston Recreation Facility. Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Second one. Which is in the packet. Uh county website redesign and web holding for a period of three years. Uh we also have. Been advertising and are ready to hire a company to redesign our website. I might want Nancy or Bill to weigh in on this, or John, whatever's the best way to do it. This is not something we do all the time.
Is this something new, Mr. Chairman?
It's new in the.
Is this something new?
We realized the last year or maybe a little earlier that we needed to up, step it up a little on our website, so. We decided.
It was funded in the F one twenty-two budget.
And we funded it in the budget, this budget.
Respectfully asked like before, who did the website before?
That's a very good question.
I mean, you're just looking to see what, what's, is there shifting responsibility?
Yeah, who did the last website?
Get fused.
Skip huge?
Get fused.
And how long ago?
Oh, it's a vendor, okay. Okay, so it's always been a vendor.
Vendor too.
Okay, no, that's one of the ones. Okay. So it wasn't in-house, so someone, yeah, it was.
Correct. And I sent it out to three different companies.
Okay.
And.
No, that was my question. I didn't know if it was done by IT or someone else. I mean, I was just asking. Okay. Okay, good. Nope, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we're going to uh take, do we need to take this under advisement or are we ready to go?
You're ready to go. The bids were reviewed by a team, including myself, Mr. Buckley, Miss Rockwell. Um your team is recommending revise, receiving the web services agreement. Um I want to point out that uh this is the lower bid. Um however, in this case, the, the firm has additional. Um footprint in Massachusetts. They do quite a few local jurisdictions, including North Adams, which I looked at their website yesterday. Um they're out of Michigan. Um and they have demonstrated um experience. Handling municipal websites and the traffic and um security here, issues that arise. With regard to ma- maintaining a public website. Uh the cost is twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars and I want to. Give Nancy some credit. We spoke about trying to push the cost down by doing our best and final yesterday. She contacted Revise and they reduced uh their costs accordingly. Uh so without any further questions, I will advance revise. Web services for twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars.
Okay. It, so that would be a motion for the chairman to sign?
Uh I don't know if I can make a motion, so.
So I'll second and just want to clarify.
Any discussion, go ahead.
So I want to make sure we're clear on this. So your, the recommendation is we're going with this company here, Revise.
Correct.
Which is a minority business enterprise.
It is.
But a record was good to know. And you feel they're solid and they're going to do a good job for us?
They, they demonstrated that in their bid response. Uh again, I want to underline their experience in other public municipal spaces was impressive.
Okay.
So we, we feel compelled that um they answered the scope that was posted and their cost was favorable.
And this is the web design for the county side, right?
That's it.
All counties.
Uh well, no. Um for example, the Register of Deeds will have its own website.
Okay.
This, this is our public facing space.
Yep.
Uh if individuals land on our space and they want to get to the registry, there's a button and you just move to the registry.
How about the Aggie School?
Same thing.
Say they have their own thing, but yeah, but they'll be linking in these things.
That's correct.
Okay, these departments. Good. Okay, great. So one right sure. It's all new. Good. It's okay. I second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh question, I have a question. How long does it take to get this up and running?
Yeah.
Uh do you have the answer on Nancy?
It's all in phases. Um I think some of it depends on how quickly we decide on. What we're using for our different formats. So I would probably say maybe four, five months, twelve.
Okay.
As a.
But once we sign this, we're on our way, right?
Yes.
Yes, I think, Mr. Chairman, there's a.
Go ahead.
There is a sort of entry plan where they've kind of dictated two weeks to start off and. And much of it is just data migration. So we're not reinventing the wheel. We're just taking the currently posted minutes, putting them in a, in a different, more user-friendly, more accessible. Uh page. So uh in some of our initial conversations, uh Mr. McGrath's from working with Nancy. Uh me at first, then Nancy predominantly uh felt that he might be able to shave off some time too because they're not um really. Not changing and they're not building from scratch.
Okay.
And one of those brand-new photos we took today.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a great thing where we always, we're advocating transparency and to have a web uh designed state-of-the-art. They help everyone surf on the web these days. So it's great.
I think it's time and.
It's great.
You know, it came up last year in the fall in the campaign. I don't usually hang my career on, on what's said during the campaign, but it was quite. Extensive. I know you, you were asked the same questions and, you know, people saying your presence, I, it's better than it used to be, at least, you know, but. It's hard to follow, so I said, we're going to do something.
Yeah, it's good. It brings us to today. Thanks, guys. Good. It's been fun.
And we put in the budget and it, I mean, was, went right through, which was good.
Yeah. Three, Mr. Chair, to that point, uh we were very specific in ADA compliance for the attack, every document, every spec of the. Of the website will be ADA compliant for ghost seeking, uh voice, uh text to, to voice reading. And uh the other thing that was the boost to note was the ability for uh our staff to get twenty-four hour uh help from theirs. Uh as well as the ease and accessibility of us adding documents, presentations.
Excellent.
Real quick, uh it's, it's the type of thing where hopefully we can be in an advisory board, meaning someone can ask for documentation if you're there.
Yeah. Can they help us?
This contract is for three years, but.
Three years, yeah. Yeah. This is great. We didn't vote it. Did we vote it yet?
No. Peter made a motion, I believe, and you seconded it.
I did second it, yep.
Motion been made and seconded. To do the county website redesign and web hosting for a period of three years. And the company is known as Revise. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you. Uh number twelve. Fiscal twenty-two purchase and rules and regulations. Nancy?
I'm right here. Yes, there have been no changes since the previous year. Our thresholds follow the state's thresholds for all.
And we're required to adopt them every year?
Yes.
This is standard procedure. Okay.
Give me a motion.
I, I think so, to adopt the twenty-twenty-two purchase rules and regulations.
All right, I move the adoption for fiscal twenty-two of the purchase and rules and regulations that are in effect and to continue for the following year.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Number thirteen, report on American Rescue Act, Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. Director Colonel.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. The um, the county's interest in this program continues uh under its fact-finding level. Although several weeks as we've reported, Norfolk County has reached out to our sister counties as well as the state's A and F to determine. Uh the pros and cons of um taking uh the funds that are allocated towards Norfolk County citizen towns. Or uh delivering directly to those host um communities. Uh through the chairman's actions. We have scheduled a meeting for tomorrow in Taunton at noon time with our two sister counties, Bristol and Plymouth. Um where we will learn more about those two counties' approach to this program. Which I believe both counties have now opted into to manage. Um as previously reported, one of them, Plymouth, is um well on its way to developing a plan. Um and program for its communities in its county. I expect to continue to learn more. Um as we inch closer to potentially a vote on opting in or opting out. The American Rescue Plan Act, as you probably know, includes over one hundred and thirty-six million dollars for our cities and towns in Norfolk County. Um and the options um that will be for you include accepting the funds and then determining how the county can manage. Um those resources towards the benefit of the community. So.
we're looking forward to tomorrow's meeting, which I think will be a very pivotal, uh, discussion with our, our fellow, uh, counties, and, um, obviously we'll have something more definitive for, report next week.
Okay, well, uh, I want to report to everyone that the meeting was posted, because more than one commissioner will be there. I'm proud to say that the three of us are going.
Okay.
Couple of commissioners are going in the other town, so. The meeting will-
Twelve o'clock, Superior Court.
Yeah. Be a first for me, but I'll find, we'll find it. We're gonna go in the caravan, yeah. We're, we're, we're treasure-buy. He, he was, last time I went, he was the DSA driver, so.
Is Mike gonna be coming this time?
Aren't you coming?
No, no, I'll be there. Mike Bellotti will be there also, yes.
I believe, yes. As of now, yes.
I'll probably, it might be, I mean, he's-
You're gonna meet us there? Yeah, I'm just gonna come and chat with these two guys and jump in my-
It took an hour to get there. I might, I don't want to miss the face.
That's true.
For me, I can pick up one thirty-eight, so.
And, uh, but either way, we're good. It's good that we have more than one county, because I might keep going over there, but we'll see for that.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
I think we should say one more thing, too.
Sure.
Um, so I know different towns watch our, um, our meeting feed every week, and you know the towns are concerned about the American Rescue Plan, what they take will be from these funds, and I think our intention has always been the same. And I, I like to say it pretty much every week, but our goal is to
Pass them.
Pass through to the towns as, as much money as, as, as we can. A small amount of money may, uh, be used by the county. A small amount of money may be used by the county just to monitor the program, but the goal of the county in taking the funds is, is for the benefit of our towns. It's not, it's not for any of the benefit, of the benefit of our towns.
I can't disagree. I know, I'm really eager to see in dialogue with Bristol, who I don't know anything about, as well as Plymouth, to see what their potential uses are as well. But I think certainly everybody's getting it from our local towns. I think, I think it's not so much that they maybe even say want the money, they just want to know how much they can plant, because that's the thing is, I think when you hear talk to some of the managers, it's, I know the MMA put out a study and said, here's what the amount would be, and maybe that was a disservice, maybe it was, it wasn't. We could argue that all day, maybe. But I was just saying, for, for brevity, I think what, what, I think the town planners, and we owe them that, is to give them a number as they prepare in the budgets for their own town meetings coming up, so. Hopefully, you know, sooner we get on it, the better.
To your point, Commissioner, the, um, the communities that have previously expressed through their independent action for the municipal slice of ARPA, yeah, through the letter of interest are beginning to receive that slice.
That's true.
So as any local official will tell you, if you're planning something and you have half a loaf, you're looking for the other half, right?
That's what's going on.
So I, I, I think you're absolutely right.
Yeah, yeah, good point. Look forward to it. Interesting day.
Okay, thank you. We'll learn more tomorrow. Um, I'm gonna leave, uh, without objection, I'm gonna leave, um, the county director's report and emergency items till the, till the end. I don't believe they'll be too lengthy. And I'm gonna go back to number eight on the regular agenda, personal matters of consideration. We have four at the school, one at Wallaston, one in maintenance, three in the engineering, three in the registry deeds, and one in engineering. The first one is a notice, um, for a student worker at the school. We'd have a motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move, um, for, at the Aggie High School, under a personal matter for consideration, uh, contingent employment. We can probably take a couple of them up to save time.
Sure.
I would move approval, Mr. Chairman, of Anna Hopper of Linden, Mass., um, also Nolan Doyle of Dedham, Mass., and also Angelina Nichols of High Park, uh, to work as a, uh, income capacity as student worker or summer camper, student labor, uh, at the Aggie School for the rate of pay indicated in a date effective seven. How's that?
Second. One of the first three motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Those are unanimous.
All right, for the record note, the notice of resignation of Tammy Kraus, the brain tree, as substitute nurse, uh, effective six twenty-four twenty-one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. For Wallaston Recreation Facility, another contingent employment for Andrew Viola of Milton as a seasonal grounds crew, effective seven-one twenty-one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Which is tomorrow. That's amazing. July.
Facilities maintenance.
Facility maintenance, notice of termination of Robert Colton as night roving maintenance foreman. That's effective today.
Second. All in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. One, two.
Uh, let's take one, two. Notice of retirement of Diane Watson of Walpole, Mass., head administrative assistant, effective this date, and notice of retirement of James Limby of Stoughton, Mass., as chief information officer, uh, for the salary noted effective this date.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Both unanimous.
All right. Notice of appointment of Richard Hatch of Plimpton as chief information officer, effective six, so I'm sorry, I'm sorry, effective seven-six twenty-one. Or you want to take engineering?
Why don't you take engineering? Just, just to clean that.
All right, let's clean, I'm sorry. All right. Engineering department, we'll skip that one. Notice of dated address, oh, for the record, of Patrick Hayes of, uh, West Newbury, Mass., just effective, uh, new address, effective six twenty-one twenty-one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. You have to approve those, you have to, you have to approve, it's like, all right.
We have, yes.
What if we don't approve it? You can't, sorry, Patrick, get a move. I know.
Somewhere in the rules and regulations it says you must notify, so I did look at it before.
All right, all right, so, Mr. Chairman, I will move, for the sake of discussion, I know we're gonna have some, um, notice of appointment of Richard Hatch that was submitted by the registrar as chief information officer with the effective date, I'll forget this right, of seven-six twenty-one. That is my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second on the motion?
You want a second on the motion for discussion?
I'll take it, sure.
Okay, I'll, I'll second the motion for discussion on them.
Thank you.
Okay, on the matter of, uh, notice of appointment of Richard Hatch at Plimpton, Mass. as the chief information officer, it's on the table for discussion. This is effective seven-six twenty-one. It's a replacement for James Limby, who is today still the chief information officer. In your packet, I have two letters addressed to this situation. We've had some discussion prior to today. I'm trying to actually, we have three letters, yeah.
There's three?
And from Bill.
Did I miss one?
One's my email.
One's Bill's email, and then two, two letters. I just, I want anything I have, I want to be sure it's-
I know, it's a letter from, uh, Chairman Redden, I believe.
Chairman Redden and a letter from-
I just saw that.
A, a letter from-
Was it a consultant?
Mark Abrahams, the Abrahams Group, who was our best practice consultant. And I think, as John said, for discussion purposes, or just to keep us in the loop, copy of his email.
Since I made the motion, may I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Just for the sake of discussion and-
Absolutely.
So I want, I just want to explain a little bit, and I maybe, again, I think this is a good process that we have, and I, I respect the process, and that's what I'm about. Um, when we first talked about, as a board, the idea of the hiring freeze, I mean, me, I remember it clearly, we were still in remote, we were all doing Zoom. And I remember the now chairman of the advisory board stating that he thought it was a good idea, but he clearly had said this was his idea. He wasn't speaking on behalf of the advisory board or anyone else. He just thought that we should probably put, uh, a hiring freeze until further notice. And I know Commissioner Collins thought that was a prudent idea as well, and thought that was a good thing. When I went along with that, and I'm gonna clarify a little bit, I thought at the time, again, revisionist history, that because of the budget process not being clarified, and because of perhaps the fear that we might not be in a good financial situation, that I thought it made sense to put a freeze on. A lot of times, government entities put freezes on spending when there's like, you see government shutdowns, when there's a budget crisis. Well, clearly, over the last couple of weeks, we've seen that we really, I'm not gonna say we're flush with cash, but we're in a pretty good situation. We do have a significant amount of unappropriate balances, and we haven't even closed the books yet on the registry. So you can't, can't argue that we're not, like, for example, teetering on the edge here. I think we're in pretty good shape. That said, the other issue we brought up, and I acknowledge that, that perhaps we should hold off until we look at other things, such as the consultants doing his job and, and finishing, looking at staffing. To that, I respectfully say this. We already made one exception in terms of the Aggie School. When we said, okay, we need this person, the Aggie person is needed, the specialized teacher. If we don't fill that position, what happens? Number one, it would have affected students, which would have been terrible. And number two, it would have been a legal issue. We could have been liable. If there were some cases that perhaps by our own, let's say, dereliction of duty, not filling that job could have resulted in perhaps law cases by advocates saying, you had a duty to fill that position and you didn't fill it. So I'm gonna say, perhaps respectfully, perhaps we should be looking at this the same way. This person, what I've been told, and my understanding is, he's in charge of, uh, many things at the registry, including cybersecurity. And we know that out there today, you're about hackers and people, you know, invading the system and causing all sorts of problems. What happens if we don't fill that position, even for a short time, and something happens, God forbid, it's a breach of security? Are we liable? Are we gonna have a lawsuit? And also, are we doing a disservice to, again, maybe not to students in this case, but it's analogous to the people that use that system? The people, the lawyers and the people that use the registry. So I think a case can be made that, yes, there is a consultant's report coming, I acknowledge that. I also would like to say one last thing. I think that to rush that person and to say, we're gonna get it in three weeks or four weeks, we may be doing a disservice. I thought, and this is the truth, I thought that we were gonna be working with the consultant and our new director, Mr. Cronin, and this board, and Mr. Buckley, in moving towards addressing fiscal twenty-three and using that report as we move forward. So for example, let's say they recommend some changes, and they recommend some consolidation. As we prepare, and you know how it works, the budget for fiscal twenty-three, now we have this, and we use it as a tool, and we talk to our departmentists. And I think in fairness to people like Billy, or Mike Bellotti, or the Wallaston Golf Course, they're all put on notice, saying, okay, moving forward, there could be some changes coming. And that was my vision, to not fill a position now where the money is there, where the position is there, and we could be at risk, I think, to, not to be contrary to Mr. Redden, who I have great respect for, but I think that's a dereliction of our duty. I think that we are not doing our duty, we're not filling it. And he calls us out to say, be consistent, I get that, and, and the easy call is to say, well, the consultants do it? I think it's an important decision as an elected official to say, no, we need to fill this job in this person, but I think Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Bellotti and everybody else should know, with that report coming, all eyes will be looking at everything towards how can we make it even better? With that, that was why I made the motion, and I do that with great respect. Thank you for listening.
Any comments, Commissioner Collins?
Um, yeah, so, I'll, I'll go back. I'll go back to when we did the, uh, the best practice evaluation. So the commissioners, the three commissioners at the time, so it'd be for your time here, Jim.
Yeah.
Uh, we made, uh, we made the decision that to go with a, a best practice evaluation was, uh, the proper thing. We wanted to be ahead of the curve, we wanted to, um, bring county government forward and to, to give the best service that we could to our cities and towns. We approached the finance committee, and, um, they were considering it, and before they voted it, um, I, I had them wait for a second before they did their vote, and I said, don't make this vote unless you're willing to, to go along with the best practice finding. Don't. And I said, you know, we're doing this because we want to do, we want to have a better county. We're gonna drop fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars to do this. And I think it's important that we take great guidance from these people that give us the best practice. Now, the vote comes to us in the end, but the idea was, uh, to put our best foot forward as, as much as we could. And the advisory board, um, agreed. They said, yeah, that's our plan. Our plan is to do this best practice evaluation. And we hope to take the findings from the evaluation and, um, and put it into practice as best we can. So that was their opinion at the time. So then it went to the advisory board, and the advisory board, uh, voted to, uh, allow us to spend the money. That's how it all, it all went down. And, um, I know, um, the advisory board finance committee, they, they were really pushing for a hiring freeze before the end of the year. For the, for the reasons that you said, I thought, you know, um, we had, we didn't know how the budget was gonna stack up at the end. It's always nice to, to not spend money until you know what you have. But I, I think a bigger part of it, too, is uh, with the best practice evaluation come, if we could consolidate different positions, we didn't want to be in a position where we're hiring people, and then they're gonna lose their job in a short amount of time. And so, um, I, I think that was their intent, and so my vote initially was to run it to the next fiscal year. We were hoping that the Abrahams Group would have their report out. It's not, it's not out yet, it's not ready.
Right.
And, um, I under, I, I understand, um, the issues of cybersecurity, I get it. Everything that you said, I, I, it makes sense to me, I get it. I'm not really a big computer guy. Individual companies, uh, municipalities, uh, bigger, uh, bigger industries that are supplying energy and all that, they're getting hacked every single day. So, uh, the last thing we want is for our records at the registry to be hacked. And they're our records. It's not just the registered records, it, they're all of our records, and it's every city, every city and town in Norfolk County, it's everyone's records. No one wants them hacked. We get that. And the request from, uh, Mr. Redden, who was the chair of the finance committee, and a request from, uh, Mr. Redden, who is now the head of the advisory board this year, and from Dr. Childs also, and my understanding is the finance committee, um, saw Joe Redden's letter. Or they, or at least they understood the sentiment from Joe Redden. I talked to Joe yesterday, and he said that every single member of the finance committee wants us to hold off until the Abrahams Group report comes out. I get that. And, um, so I was concerned, you know, I, 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 I called, I, I called, um, John, and I said, hey, you know, what's the deal, what's the deal with, um, past practice? What's, what has happened when Jim Limby wasn't around? And, um, I learned that Jim Limby, you know, took a two-week vacation last August, he was out. You know, so, um, the person that is the second-in-command for IT for the registry, it took over for a couple of weeks. And, um, I know that when our, our director, um, moved on, and, and moved on to another town, uh, we had an interim director who was our HR person, and we had the assistant director who continued as the assistant director, but they collaborated together, and they worked really, really hard, and they were tired to, to keep us together till our new director came on board.
You'll do.
And, um, if, if the registry needs some additional help, I'm sure, uh, Mark McDonald will be able to help in, in an interim basis, for, you know, for a few weeks. And it's one of the things that, that uh, Joe Redden wrote, and I think it's kind of important to get at, is that, um, we're not looking at months and months, we're not looking at years, we're looking at, hopefully, just a few weeks before this report comes out. And one of the things I mentioned to John, um, it was earlier than yesterday, but one of the things, I think it was last week, so one of the things I mentioned to our, our director is, would it be possible for the Abrahams Group to focus on the IT issue at the registry? Can we, can we kind of have them speed up at least that portion of this? So they can give us a preliminary report on that, uh, particular position and, or the IT positions overall? Because I don't think it's just the IT position that they're looking at at the registry. They're looking at the IT position here, they're looking at the IT position at the school.
Correct.
And, and they want, they want to consolidate this, so it's a, it's a proper network, and so if someone goes down, the other two people could fill in and do the right thing, so. All that being said, uh, I respect, um, Mr. Redden, I respect the finance committee, I respect the advisory board, and I respect their opinions. I respect Register O'Donnell and his concern for the IT, uh, safety of his documents. But if we're looking at a few weeks, um, this isn't a vote. I am going second today.
So if I could, uh, and, and good comments, Peter. Uh, what, what ones I would expect? Um, but my, my, my concern is, my sincere feeling is that when you're getting a consultant's report, okay, especially, it is summertime, all right, it is the summer, you're gonna get something that we may have it in three weeks, we may have it in a month. Let's just say hypothetically. I go, notice already, you're great on timelines, you're, you're good about timelines. So, all right, we get a report in August, because July is, July is tomorrow. But to properly vet it, that's my concern. I don't want to be given a report. I don't, and then say, I'm gonna vote it the next week. I don't want to do that. I think we, we need to look at it, have discussions with the people it affects, and, and, you know, cross-examine. It may take another month, so now you're looking at maybe eight weeks. It might not be until September. And that's what I'm saying. Can we afford a lapse of eight weeks? And that's what I'm saying, can we afford a lapse of eight weeks? Right, and I'll just make that final point respectfully. That's all I'm saying. Hey, I understand what you're saying, I do, because it seems redundant to hire a person and then if the report comes back and we look at it and say, you know what, we could do this a better way. I'm all about improving the county, I want to do that. That's why I got elected, I mean, that's why I ran, I want to make the county the best there is in the whole state, that's what I want. So if we can do this a better way, let's deal with guys, I'm with you. But I'm afraid, I'm really sincerely afraid of what's going to happen in the three to four to five to eight weeks. What happens, what if, what if, what if, that's all. So that's why I felt maybe we should go forward with this, unless it was another way, I don't know. I know the chairman, I'm sorry, the director came up with another suggestion, it was an email, forgive me, I think last week.
For some.
Yeah, and I thought, but my understanding was that person might not be capable of doing it to the level that we need, okay?
Right, when I communicated with the register, he kindly called me back Friday evening, we talked. Yeah. The likelihood of that individual stepping out. He indicated that the individual is not yet ready, didn't want that role. He appreciated the creative thinking, et cetera. If I could, Mr. Chairman, one point to.
I want to state, for the record, I wanted to acknowledge, for Chairman Redden, I did not ignore, he called me yesterday, it was a crazy day. My internet, my internet was not working because I was doing electrical work on my house. So it was off and on and I wanted to call Joe, but I will circle back to him. But be that as it may, go ahead.
Just one point for your benefit, Commissioner. The Abraham's Report has five-pronged deliverables associated with what they are going to give you all when their product is ready.
Yep.
They fall under the multi-year financial forecasting prong, the financial management best practices review and establishment of financial policies prong, operations and staffing analysis, which is where this piece would fall.
Right.
Capital planning, and then finally, regional services review. We, you all could likely work easily with the vendor to parse pieces of this report and move them at different speeds. I can assure you that the second one, financial management best practices and establishment of financial policies, I will try to get to you as fast as possible, we should act on those without delay.
And we got to draft it out already, didn't we?
Yes, I believe you did.
I've been looking at that.
With respect to the operations and staffing analysis, it's clear this board is locked in on what that means for the, I almost say the Commonwealth, for the county.
It's okay.
Right in. And I think that's an important piece too, that would have to be elevated quickly as an actionable item. The other pieces though, Commissioner Stady, could very well become more long-term pieces that we invest time in to adopt or park. We may not have to take action on them. So I just wanted to state that you're right, I would not expect this commission to be able to accept, digest and take a vote on the five-pronged project within days after receiving it. It's sensible to suggest however, that you could parse it and take the pieces that elevate to your level of priority and take action on your terms. So I just want to point that out, they are, whatever way to put it, Dick, it's elegant.
Yeah, that's actually, okay, I didn't know that that was an option and that certainly would accelerate the timeline and it was short enough. The other thing would be, and I want to be fair, you know, I think sometimes if we get locked on to certain things and it seems that maybe we're not gaming up, but the registry lender a microscope, you know? I would like to see if we're going to do that and take that piece out, look at everything else, not just the registry. As IT, I want to look at all the components and look at like the Aggie School and what we're doing here. Look, we're going to get real good evaluation of what we're doing, you know what I'm saying? And other things, I'd like to see that as part of that report, I would like to see that.
The report is focusing on staffing consolidations for facility maintenance and technology. Those are the two items under that third prong that I just mentioned.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, when it's appropriate to speak, Register O'Donnell, when it's up to you.
Why don't we not get in the picture? Why don't you speak now, Mr. Register, it's appropriate.
Sure, well, thank you, Commissioner Shea, Commissioner Thello, Director Cronin, everyone in the room. Well, and I will, you know, bring down the paperwork of what I'm kind of working off of as the reasons to sign the registry chief information officer personnel papers. And first of all, information technology and the modernization of the registry deed has been the focus of the registry for over twenty years. It's crucial, it's integral, it's necessary to registry operations, this position of CIO, Chief Information Officer, and it's been funded for twenty years and continues to be funded. So have we had any problems in the IT arena? No, and why not? Because we've had a registry chief information officer. And believe me, the landscape has changed over twenty years ago. When we first started, there wasn't even emails here at the registry. But the IT registry landscape, and we can just kind of say, oh, people can pick this up or pick that up or people can substitute this, it doesn't happen. We have a generator, we have a server, we have a disaster recovery server now, with your good graces, a disaster recovery office, a phone system. We have multiple information and communication systems, including voice data and imaging. And the chief information officer monitors and manages these systems. It's not like someone could just step in. I mean, some people that are here, they are certainly qualified and they certainly have covered. People are entitled to go on vacations, so let me tell you, the chief information officer that was here, Chuck Phalen, and then later, Jim Limby, I've had two in twenty years, believe me, they monitor, they're never on vacation. They always have the phones, they're always checking in the computers. So it's, you know, these, this system gets monitored, especially the IBM server, which is in the registry. It's monitored twenty-four-seven by the CIO. You know, this server is a living and breathing system, which is, you know, constantly changing. And there's input, there's output, data is added, deleted, manipulated. We have backup routines. We have over thirteen million documents that are here, over forty million pages. And there's routine backups on this server, they occur daily, weekly, monthly. And again, these are monitored and managed by the chief information officer. The server produces messages and reports, the CIO interprets the messages and reports and, you know, and they make judgments on our IT system and more importantly, on the threats to our IT system. And this chief information position, it's not something that just gets substituted willy-nilly. It's not redundant with any other position at the registry or the county for that matter. You know, there was some mention that a county employee could sub in, Mark McDonald. It just, I just don't see that happening. And this is not a knock on the other person that's here, the senior network administrator. We do cross-training and things like that, but he came in, his job is to analyze, maintain, manage, what does he do? A hundred and thirty Dell window desktops here, twenty-three network printers, eight high-speed scanners at the registry. So the network administrator is responsible for diagnosing and troubleshooting any issues with the hardware mentioned above. So we have a department of two, I tell people they have great titles, but they're really chief cooks and bottle washers. They're doing everything and really, you know, I appreciate being put on notice, but really, this department should be expanded, not contracted. But I just want to get the chief information officer signed, signed up, because you know what? These two jobs, they respond to technical questions and concerns of the registry staff and of the employees. The assessing departments call in, registry users, including online subscribers and the general public, they contact us, town governments and departments within those governments that rely on registry data and information, that's who the CIO and the network administrator are dealing with, and it's a crucial position. You know, I got to ask, is there any question that this is an essential position? I mean, you know, I'm just asking through the chair, because I'll keep going, is there any question that this is an essential position?
I don't, if you're asking me, I don't believe there's any question that it is, it is.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Chair, because, you know, the chief information officer is just so essential, so necessary to registry operations and the overall health of our network and IT infrastructure. So it's unimaginable to me not to have a chief information officer, especially, and I know it's been busy and I know there's always money concerns, but in calendar year twenty-twenty, over sixty-eight million dollars in revenues came in. And I know people just, you know, at public meetings have just kind of dismissed that, but there's a lot at stake here. And if we don't take the steps to have a chief information officer and to protect the IT department, we're going to have an operational deficiency, but more importantly, we could have a cybersecurity issue. And so I'm glad to hear that the registry CIO position is essential. I believe it's critical and an integral position. Now, it's so important, it can't be left unfilled. I would say even for one day, it shouldn't be unfilled. And, you know, I've heard some of the arguments made back and forth, but the registry CIO is in charge of technology and cybersecurity. It's too important a job not to have it in place from day one. In twenty years that I've been here, there's been a chief information officer and Paul Harold, it was a different title, had a director of data processing. So he too had a chief information officer over twenty years ago. So it's so important and it, you know, to me, it, we have fiduciary duties. I mean, a lot of the monies that get collected, I get it, it unfortunately doesn't all go to the county. A lot of it goes to the state, but we have responsibilities here. And, you know, when the time's appropriate, I, you know, well, actually, I think I do want to address the Abraham's Report. I don't know what's in the report. There could be comments about the Aggie School in the Abraham's Report, yet papers got signed for the Aggie School. I don't have any inside information or anything that knows what that Abraham's Report is about. And I want to applaud County Director Cronin, he had a staff meeting, great communication yesterday. He had everybody over there at the commissioner's office. And it came up because another official brought up that he had not been spoken to, and I'll let that person speak for themselves, to Mark Abraham's hadn't spoken to him. And then I was asked by, I was asked, was I spoken to by Mark Abraham's about registry operations? And I haven't. And this process, I believe, started back in October, it's ten months. So, you know, to not be spoken to, and now I'm being told there's discussions about the IT and proposals in the future, that's all well and good, but I believe in the here and now. And the here and now warrants this being signed. And I know we keep bringing things up and again, this is being respectful. I mean, and I'm not, it's not my memory. And Commissioner Collins, I don't want you to have this taken the wrong way, I got too much respect and I've gone way back with you. But in the June sixteenth minutes, you know, when that whole special education person got hired, in the minutes, and I'm looking at the minutes of June sixteenth, it says, Commissioner Collins stated the finance committee asked the commissioners to put a hold on hiring non-essential employees. Commissioner Collins stated the finance committee was in favor of hiring essential employees and seasonal summer employees. And then Commissioner Collins stated to say the special education director is not essential is a stretch. Again, I'm not trying to, all I'm trying to do is bring up another situation where a paper got signed and the registry chief information officer, we're all acknowledging is essential and therefore, to be consistent, it should not be vacant for even a day. And I'll bring, you know, these arguments down and have them incorporated in the minutes. It's entitled reasons to sign the registry chief information officer personnel. And some of the questions you've answered about, you know, recognizing it's essential, I appreciate that. But I just can't stress enough and I don't want to keep talking on and on, but it is that important. This is absolutely needed, it's crucial, it's an essential position. And just on fairness and just moving things forward and running this registry and running this county like a business, the chief information officer has to be put in place. And on a human level, I mean, an offer was made to a candidate and we started this back in the winter. I know there's been talk about process, you know, you just don't replace a chief information officer and people are entitled to retire. We started this process in the winter, we put advertisements on the MMA website and on Indeed. I know the interim director Labadini, actually, in April noted that the MMA posting for the chief information officer, asking about it. So it's been out there, we reviewed the, I got to thank my IT department and my registry management team. Resumes were reviewed, it was two rounds of interviews, a lot of nice candidates. And we got somebody that's really qualified. Director Cronin asked for a job description, we sent it immediately. He asked for a resume, we sent it immediately. I mean, this person is qualified and he was made an offer in total reliance of a budget process. There's a budgeted position, it's been funded, we're now saying it's an essential position under the terms of that vote, if it's an essential position, I hope you see fit to approve this. It's that crucial of a vote. If there's one vote, I could think of many votes over the years. I got to say, in my tenure as register, this is probably the most important and the most crucial. And I'd like us to just put things aside and vote this chief information officer. We'll get, you know, we'll get protection, we'll get a good candidate, we'll get a good person and whatever happens in the future, we move forward on. But, you know, there's a personal side to this too, that a person is, you know, due to start work on July sixth with your approval. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say, the human component we're forgetting too is this person. Can you tell us, John, something that makes this person qualify? I didn't see the resume, but.
I'm probably not the right person to give you that opinion. Register O'Donnell interviewed him. I can attest, based on what he submitted with respect to his resume.
Yeah.
He seems to perfectly fit the role that was described in the posting.
Okay.
So I, but I didn't interview him, Dick, so I can't.
Okay, you're right, that's not.
Whether or not he competed against other quality candidates, but on paper, I would affirm what the register said with regard to his qualifications for the position.
Mr. Williams, Chairman.
Yes.
Register O'Donnell?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, can you tell us what this person you're recommending, where he last worked, where his last job was?
Sure, and again, we had a number of good candidates and everything was professionally done. It's not like I knew this person or anything like that. When you're dealing with the IT, you have to run it professionally and this person fits the bill. For the last six years, he's had a job with EMC and Dell EMC. So as a director of information technology and project manager, you know, again, we all are familiar with EMC and Dell EMC, a quality company. He had a stint with Jordan Hospital where he was a director of network and telecommunications. And again, what I was impressed with talking about him, in a hospital setting, you know, you have a twenty-four-seven environment and, you know, he had that. I got to say, he was also the information technology director at Partners Healthcare. He spent a number of years working for Dana Farber. And again, he unified not only the communications, but the information to improve the Yaki Center for Cancer and what was done where they had, they put computers and switches in that actually could monitor in lower wait times where they could tell where patients were and how long they sat in the chair. It was just a very impressive person. And I like, you know, having been in the private sector, I certainly looked for private sector experience, but he also did a stint in government with the Massachusetts Turnpike Authority, albeit for a year. You know, again, working on IT stuff, semantic enterprise vault and active directory, and there were over six hundred users. So person's tremendously qualified and I just, I just hope it's not lost on anybody. You know, it's a person here behind these papers and we're getting a quality person. And more importantly, I also rely on my senior management team, but my IT professionals because as was mentioned, you know, you have to rely, it's a different language sometimes. And, you know, both the outgoing IT chief information officer and the network administrator who's here were enthusiastically supportive of having Richard Hatch's papers be signed. were enthusiastically supportive of having uh Richard Hatch's papers be signed. And, and I, I can't urge you, I, 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 I can't urge you anymore vociferously or passionately or whatever other word you want to use, um, if you could see fit to, to sign this person's chief, as chief information officer.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments? I'm trying to uh balance all of this in my mind. And I'm not going to speak along on this because I think we're nearing the end of a process that probably started more than three years ago. Originally budget-driven, originally driven by outside auditing reports that were presented once a year by the General Lords. And we have our people come in and read the management letter and we address the issues. And we had a new county treasurer come in, in 2017 and, 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 and asked about some of these issues. Subsequent to that, we wrote a letter to the state looking for some relief or some help. A, a, a third party to look at it, a new set of eyes, whatever you want to call it. We were not successful in hearing from the state, not officially anyway. We then went to the advisory board and presented a case, which is stronger today than it was two and three years ago. But I have to tell you that coming all the way down the line, appropriating $75,000 to have a best practice study, getting three quotes, selecting this company, and then have it come down to the last quarter, the last few months of it. And I felt tremendous pressure to ask Mark, when's this going to be ready? When's this going to be ready? And I decided I just didn't feel we should hurry him. I don't feel we should pick one above another, but I'm agreeing that maybe this one uh could be isolated and, and brought to the forefront of everything because of course it's an essential job. But having said all this, and I can go into the other departments, the three openings in the uh maintenance department, including the plumber that we haven't filled, the one opening in the, the engineering department that's been carried two years in a row, a salary of over $100,000 that we haven't filled. because on one hand, we're trying to save money and the other hand, we're trying to look for everything. And I don't know what it says either. But we've come too far to turn back. When I have the new chairman of the advisory board and the old chairman of the advisory board is on the budget committee, as well as several other people appointed by them, write this letter. I think we would be setting ourselves as a county way back. And I think we owe it uh to every city and town. It's a new day. An outside study is a new thing for us. We hired a new county director, our fourth county director uh since I've been here, and I've only been here five years. We, we, we seem to have a pretty good budget in place. I think we're coming close. And we're not talking about not filling this job. We're talking about a short time. I'm not going to say it's a week, I'm not going to say it's a month. But I'm not going to compare it to anything else we do. Uh, I'm gonna hold the line and try to work this out for everyone. I don't believe uh that we've ever held up a per form, and that's what they call the blue papers, per forms, I don't know why, from the registry of deeds until this session came. Although it says on the blue form, send a resume, it's a requirement we send a resume. We generally just get a name, not only from the registry, from other departments too. And we don't have a habit of going behind a resume, or behind the, behind the application, or looking for a resume. But all of a sudden, when, when something becomes controversial or, or, or testy, so to speak, we're looking at resumes. I, I'm not capable of hiring an IT director. And that isn't what I was elected to do. And I'm not capable of hiring a spread director. But I hope we have put people in place that can. We've got a new director of the school. This is a huge first quarter we've just gone through, or the first six months of this year. The timing, I can't do anything about people retiring. I didn't even know people were retiring. And I think I'm gonna ask when we put the Abrams policy, the Abrams report into play, that we do some planning of people retiring. I'm holding three letters here that say three top managers in one of our departments. Uh, based on a subject that's always on our mind, sick and, or vacation pay, are going to leave on the same day. Not only the, the sick and payout, which people are entitled to. When you construct a budget and job XYZ is a $50,000 job and a person with 30 years comes, comes in here and we owe him $26,000, that $26,000 comes right out of the line of the $50,000 and puts us in a very bad position. Subject, we couldn't replace the county engineer. Now we have Patrick Higgins aboard, we're happy to have him aboard and we wish him well. But we couldn't have filled that position any earlier than we did because we used the money up on the previous uh Joe McNichols fail. Now, in the case of the registry, it doesn't appear that the money is a problem. I think we're always chasing our tail and I can't believe it won't be addressed in the Abraham's report. You argued vociferously for a level entry job and, and, and a lot of your points are correct, um, Mr. Register. But now this is a very important job, there's no question about it. But it's almost the same arguments and I think we've come a long way and that we're at the last, we're in the last 10 yards on a 100-yard field and I want to see it through. I don't think it means the elimination of the chief information officer at the registry of deeds. But I think it means that we have a, a weight this summer to fill it. I'm not gonna, uh, I'm gonna support continuing the hiring freeze.
It could be that um, the report, after we get a chance to vet it out, may indicate that the position's appropriate or even expanded. So we're looking at it, you know, in different ways as well.
But there's ways of, of worrying about funding this down the road that has to be looked at. Generally, generally, it's not an issue in the registry because they have more money than other departments. But it's not, and that's not a bad thing, I guess, but uh, it, it, it's a problem everywhere. And I, I mean, if we have to balance one against the other, sometimes they're not related, but uh.
I think we all articulate our positions.
I'm under, we're under some, some duress because of the, the way we used to do things, so to speak. And maybe we'll go back to the way we did them. I'll be the first to tell you that I'll never bring some of these subjects up again if, if the report comes back and convinces me that um, some of these items that we, I think we haven't been doing or that we could do better uh, are really not that big of an item, but.
I would, I would just, last one last comment. I'm concerned when I hear an elected official, an elected official publicly say that he hasn't been interviewed by our consultant, and I know there's always two sides to everything. I would ask that perhaps, let's make sure we address that. And I'm hearing that there are other.
There are people in this suite that are very concerned about that statement.
That's what I'm saying, I don't want to rush it, Mr. Chairman. I'm saying politically, I don't want this thing to be hurry, hurry, hurry and get something. I really want to see this thing done the right way with the input as much as needed and give us time to vet it out and then make the proper decision. And again, I, I'm, I'm with you on that, I agree. I'm just saying the time, to me, I don't think we can do it in three weeks. I think it's gonna be more like five, six, seven, eight, whatever it might be, whatever it might be. And I was looking at it as the, as the tool in terms of moving us next to the next budget cycle and making firm decisions. But that's already said, I respect your difference of opinion and that's fine, let's move forward and let's get a vote. That's all. But let's get the, I would like to make sure people are vetted out though, John.
I'm gonna call on Director Cronin, he's just got a question.
To your point, Commissioner Stady, um, into Register O'Donnell's remarks earlier. Um, yes, yesterday, we discussed the Abraham's report, the impending delivery of the final draft to this commission, probably in late July. Um, Treasurer Bellotti expressed the fact that he had not heard from a vendor on this. His accountant, Joe Dory, put his hand up and said, I did. I've taken the um questionnaire and I've submitted it back. Um, and then I asked Register O'Donnell if he'd heard, he said he had not. Um, I do understand, following the meeting, I spoke to um Mr. Mark Abrahams to learn a little bit about what happened before I got here. Mark said, all the individuals associated with county government were, were given the opportunity to participate in a questionnaire. That was his foray into collecting data. And it was always his intention to reach out to um Treasurer Bellotti, Register O'Donnell, and he does plan to do that in the coming week or two. So it was, it was on the list of things to do, it was part of his plan. Um, he's not, you know, avoiding contact. He wanted to um connect with these individuals before the report is delivered to get their input and share information regarding the content.
Thank you for that input, that's very important.
Mr. Chairman, um, if I may, you, um, you know, I, I'm just trying to wrap myself on, around how does waiting for the Abraham's report affect an essential position to the registry of deeds such as the chief information officer? Especially where on, and again, I'm just going by the minutes of, of your meeting of June 9th. In the minutes, it said, the board voted a hiring freeze for all non-essential employees, excluding seasonal employees until July 1st, 2021. So if this person is essential, the hiring freeze shouldn't apply to the person. It's, it's a budgeted position and, you know, um, not, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but the, the Abraham's report is down. I don't know what's in it. I don't know if there's any comments about the Aggie School. Um, by that same thinking, if there were going to be comments about the Aggie School, then that paper that, that was signed last week shouldn't have been signed. So I'm just going by what the vote was. The, the vote wasn't just a hiring freeze, it was a hiring freeze for all non-essential employees, excluding seasonal employees until July 1st, 2021, which is why you voted the Aggie School. And, and I have no issues with you voting the Aggie School. That was a essential position, an important position, it should have been voted on. But so should the registry chief information officer, following what the vote was. To, to do anything else, it just seems arbitrary and complete capricious. And, and more importantly, I, I think there's just a level of, of, of possible negligence here with the negative effects that could happen not having uh an IT chief information officer. In this day and age, it's just unimaginable to think of not having one, especially when there's been one here for 20 years, a sentinel protecting the registry, helping the registry users. It's, it's, I, 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 I recognize, we get different viewpoints here, but it's, it's just essential. And based on the terms of your vote in the minutes of your June 9th meeting, the position should be approved.
Possible negligence, that's quite a term. Are you gonna tell me if there was a, a compromise in your system today, yesterday, that you wouldn't? How would you handle it?
Well, uh, we, we have a, well, yeah, I could handle it a lot better with a chief information officer, I'll tell you that. And what, what I'm saying, you, you know, respectfully, is not to have the chief information officer. Um, we, we've had people come in and, and test our system. Uh, and know what, know what one of the professionals said? It's not a matter of um if it's gonna happen, it's when. And we've been fortunate, and that's what I'm saying. I mean, um, the chief, it's such a technical thing. Having a chief information officer uh is like a sentinel, helps, deals with, deal with um cybersecurity attacks, with intrusions, with ransomware. You, you, you could have the best chief information officer and still that have that happen, I get it. Um, but to not have a chief information officer, it's just inviting problems operationally. I'm talking day-to-day operations with just the, the, the lawyers and the title examiners and, and the employees that use the system. But it also, um, not to have one, um, could invite a, a cybersecurity issue. Um, so you, you're right, it could happen today. Uh, but my answer to that would be, I'd feel a lot more comfortable having a professional, a chief information officer here that, that, that is deal, that can deal with it.
You wouldn't bring your backup person in outside, your outside consultant immediately? You haven't used them before when in emergencies?
But, but by not having a chief information officer, I mean, that's why we have a budgeted position, is to run an operation. You know, uh, that's the thing. In this operation, it's not just about the registry of deeds. I mean, I, you know, the monies that collected go to the state, go to Community Preservation Act projects around the county. Goes, money goes to the county. So it, it's, you want to fill the position so you can do your job professionally. Um, and, and run it like a business. I, I, that's the point I'm trying to make is that if you don't have a chief information officer, you're inviting problems and, and quite frankly, making it difficult uh to run the registry of deeds in the way that it's customarily run around here. It, it's not directed, you know, personally at anybody here. It's, it's really a judgment call in, in, on a business outcome. And I don't see a great business outcome, or at least I don't see the odds of a great business outcome going up. In fact, it's going down if you don't have a registry chief information officer uh in that position filled and the person up and running.
Okay, any other comments, Commissioners?
Do we have that um situation inside the county and/or at the Aggie? Is there like, I know like, for example, back in the day in Canton, you had the people that took care of the computers. Hey, my broke, my computer's not working, so they went around, they were the tech people. But then you also had like, something like an information person who was in charge of cyber, you know, cyber attacks and ransomware and all that. And they worked closely with the Canton counterpart, I'm just saying, for experience. Do we have that in the county here? Do we have like a, a type, I know we have Mark McDonald. It's his job to do both or is he just, do you know? I mean, I don't know what you're trying to say? Am I making myself clear?
No, I, I'm, I'm afraid, I'm, for clarification, even requesting if the county has external technology support.
Right.
If needed.
Right.
Uh, not to my knowledge.
Okay. I wonder if that's something we should look at. I mean, this is just making me think, because in something like this, if we had someone to fill in, help out, I'm just, I'm really worried about, really. This isn't gonna go, I can tell. That's fine, it's not, fine, but now what happens, now if something, if it's not filled.
We're waiting, yeah, sure, everything's being looked at, even things like that. But I don't know what's in there, I mean.
No, if we had some kind of a backup plan, something to help out.
With, with respect to that, I, I can, I can tell you that from a insurance standpoint, the county is protected. I just signed the insurance policy last week. We've increased our coverage for ransomware, cybersecurity, and um, attempts to damage our infrastructure. Um, we're covered there. So any costs associated with the damage, we would be covered through an insurance policy. In the event that we had a loss or we had an attempt that was outside the boundaries of the skillset of what we have for a technology director, we would likely go to state contracts to find professionals who are actively involved with dealing with these circumstances now. Uh, I believe the Steamship Authority, which is state agency, dealt with a similar circumstance and they had to bring in international assistance to help them through that process, so.
I'm not a tort lawyer, I'm not gonna pretend to be. I know from my, my study of court, uh, and Peter, you can contradict me if you want, but in do, in, in terms of establishing negligence, you've got to show a duty, you've got to show a breach of that duty, you've got to show that the breach led to causation and harm. And you're right, we're covered. But I'd be willing to wager, yeah, that those insurance lawyers would lawyer up and come after us and say, well, wait a minute now, you had an information person and you didn't fill that vacancy and you let it go. And because of that, because of that, that led directly to that attack, which led to the harm, and you're on the hook, not us. And they could find a way to perhaps not, to negate the policy. I'm just saying.
I, I, I had the presentation of your idea. I would argue if that scenario developed, I would say back to the insurance company, we didn't negligently fail to fill the position, we deferred until the position was available to fill. You know, if, if there's a difference between saying, no, we're not hiring this person and we'll get to it, you know, presumably that's an option on the table. There are two different options there, Commissioner.
I'm not gonna, I listen, and I don't want to be argumentative, I don't, I don't. I think I've made my point, I think everyone else has eloquently stated theirs and uh, you know. And it is hard and Register O'Donnell made his case, but I think at this point, uh, we should probably call for a vote, Mr. Chairman. Unless you have more to say, I don't want to cut off the debate, but.
Okay, maybe I'm gonna call for a vote, I just want to be sure what your motion was. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I, I think I understand, but.
I had moved, I had moved the.
We're gonna be questioned again and again and. We're going to be questioned again and again, and sometimes some of the stuff gets.
For the reasons I had stated and in terms of my discussion, with all due respect, and considering all the other letters we've gotten, everything else, I felt it's important to move forward at the time into appoint Richard Hatch to punt and mass as chief information officer uh, for the salary stated on the effective date of July 6th, 21. And it was seconded by Mr. Collins, Commissioner Collins.
For discussion, yeah.
That's right. I thank you for the courtesy. There was the motion before that.
Okay, on the motion made and seconded. I'm going to take, I'm going to take a voice, I'm going to take a vote. A roll call vote. Commissioner Stady.
I'll say yes, aye.
Commissioner Collins. And the chairman is going to vote no, the motion fails two to one. And I will say that the reason in, for the failure of this motion are, are in furtherance, I will say that at this time, I'm not going to support this because I'm supporting extending the hiring freeze. And that I will be happy to look at it at a later date. And entertain it or put it back on the agenda at a later date.
If it's important, I don't know if we need a motion. I don't know if it's appropriate. I don't know if it's appropriate. Maybe sense of the, sense of the board that we direct our consultant to make sure he follows up with those elected officials. And as you said, ala carte, take this particular item and put it to the front so that we can get some.
I absolutely support all of us and I don't know what, I don't know what talking to two department heads have to do with this particular issue. They can bring it up with him if they want. But I do know because we've been working extensively, that, that, that's been discussed before today, yesterday. And how it come up yesterday, I wasn't, I'm not privy to.
Okay, can we direct them in terms of what we want second and third? We didn't, capital, it should be next and things like that. I mean, how do we?
Not beyond the original charge was, was pretty broad.
Yeah, I think what we should do is, um, I'll, I'll speak to Mark about his timetable as he gets closer and welcome him on our call. But what he indicated last week when he appeared before us, Commissioner was in interest in having the full report ready within three to four weeks, which I think places at the end of July. And when I spoke to him about, um, perhaps accelerating this portion or decoupling this from the report.
Right.
Um, he, he didn't feel comfortable doing that. Is, is it still had some undone, finished, unfinished business? I think he indicated one of his consultants needed to finish some interviews with some staff. And it was landing in the same space of completion as the rest of the report. And I think given the proximity, if you're interested in the coming weeks, we can certainly ask him to refresh that date, uh, deadline and, uh, find out where he is with respect to that request.
It's fine. To be, thank you.
Okay, we're still on the record at our official meeting of June 30th, 2021. I point you with item number 14 on our agenda is report of the county director, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a few items for the board's consideration, um, to repeat something that came up earlier. Um, as fiscal year 22 looms, um, I spoke to Patrick Higgins today about working with him to develop a position to staff the vacancy, um, within his, um, agency, his unit. Um, this is the position the chairman just mentioned. Um, we obviously want to work around creating a job description that befits his needs with your approval, whether that's a staff survey, uh, engineer or a, a PE engineer or an assistant to him. Um, we, we resolved to draft something in writing that will come their way to you, uh, hopefully in the coming weeks. Um, and in consideration of this further, um, hiring freeze, we're respectful of that, but we want to get the job description to you. So that's coming. Uh, we already went through the facility issue from an administrative standpoint. Um, I just wanted to let folks know I held my first department meeting yesterday, had pretty good attendance. We went through a robust agenda, happy to give you all copies of what we discussed so you can see the content. Um, I'm planning on having weekly meetings with the department heads, uh, for the first month and then converting that into a monthly meeting thereafter, uh, just to come up to speed. Uh, finance, uh, this is fiscal year Eve, last day of fiscal year. Things are trending pretty decently. Um, I'm scheduled to meet with Joe Doria and Rick Fitzpatrick, uh, within a week. It's supposed to be tomorrow morning, but we've rescheduled it to next week to discuss the school's close, which is looking favorable, um, as well as their FY 22 open. So more on that later. Um, and I believe that covers the gist of the items that I want to report to you this afternoon.
Thank you. Number 15, emerging items are topics you did not reasonably anticipate. I have one which is the Monday, June 28th from the Norfolk Endowment Group outing. It's from the Norfolk Endowment Insurance Company, our neighbors at 222 Wayne Street. And it says the Norfolk Endowment Group is hosting employee welcome back outing on Wednesday, September 15th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And our building is under construction. The outing will take place at DCH with the intent of providing our employees an opportunity to see the progress of the building construction. We're asking permission to use some of the rear parking behind the Norfolk Registry of Deeds as our employees depart during the event. If you have any questions, please contact me, Caitlin Priscilla, Operation Director. Did you forward this to the registry?
Yeah, three, three months to chair. Um, did speak with Margaret today. Um, we're obviously very cognizant of the fact that it's the middle of a workday. Um, we had followed up with the Norfolk Endowment Group and asked them to try to keep the cars, uh, under 50. Uh, there's also limited parking at the DCH is the Deadham Community House. It's the beautiful, uh, Georgian Revival Building next to the registry. Uh, it's like the brick with the columns. It's, uh, it's, I believe, uh, owned by the town. So they're having a cookout there, uh, and they're very happy to work with us in, in that capacity. Uh, as you can see, they have the cranes up there now. They're building the whole facility.
We're going to keep it to 50, is that your suggestion? Now, we, you want a motion to that or is this more, uh, you know, so I wonder how many cars.
Right, and they, they said they were very flexible with that and they are very cognizant of, um, parking it at the far, far back closest to the Norfolk Endowment Group. So it's not interrupt registry and courts.
So I'd move, Mr. Chairman, that we allow, uh, upon request here, the Norfolk Endowment Group, uh, to utilize the parking uh, behind the registry of deeds on the date of September 15th from 11:00 to 1:00, which is stipulation to be no more than 50 cars, uh, at that, for that event.
That was fine with the registry.
Uh, I spoke, I spoke to Margaret, uh, this morning. That's just here. Do you have some thoughts?
I'm just here to deliver the, uh, to the sheet of paper to Mr. Chairman. So if you can incorporate that into the exhibits in the minutes, uh, that's what I referenced, it was what I referenced when I was talking, my talking points, I said that I would bring them over.
Thank you.
And, uh, yeah, I believe they had someone call me if it's the same event, um, someone.
Are you okay with that event?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, second. Alan Feller.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Thank you. Prior to the chairman, I have three items.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I also have two items that I forgot to mention.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, very quickly, I wanted to also alert folks that during the department head meeting, I notified them, I'll be sending out directions on, um, the new capital planning process. Uh, this commission has, um, approved a $1.1 million capital budget for FY 22. I'll be sending out guidelines by July 9th on the how and when to submit their requests against these, uh, budgeted items. Number two, unfunded item, but one we'll keep in our sights. It's follow-up to a comment I made last week relative to this building's security. We received a quote from American Alarm that totals $22,451.63 to provide readers in outside, um, video monitoring services. Mr. McDonald and I will continue our review of this item and bring it forth to you. And, uh, the advisory board at such time to seek funds to support this quote.
You, you don't see funds on such a topic ahead of right, right?
No, sir. No, not, not at this time.
Don't bring it to us unless we find.
We are, you got it.
I'm for it though.
Yes, we're just, we're looking at this as sort of a, uh, first pass and understanding what can be done.
Okay.
Then we'll level, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, housekeeping. Uh, some good news and some bad news.
Okay.
Um, unfortunately, um, I'll give you the bad news first. Leland Miner of Wilbraham, Mass, who's the father of, uh, department head at the Walsen Recreation Facility, Kyle Miner, has passed away this week. Passed away Monday. Um, we will hear further about arrangements in the standard later in the month. I'll keep you abreast of that. So our condolences go out to Kyle, member of our team. Um, two retirements. Um, one is, uh, just John McGowan informed us that, uh, Justice White at the Brookline Court has retired and will send her a letter wishing her well. We've had a very good relationship with her as long as I've been here. And, uh, she's really very nice and lovely and, uh, very supportive of, uh, the county and what we've done at the Brookline Court. And last but not least, and I know this has been a, a month of celebration. I don't think we should, uh, recess this meeting, uh, unless we talk about, uh, our good friend Tammy. Quinn, who is leaving us after 32 years, has held every position at the agricultural school. And I say every position, uh, teacher, assistant principal, principal and superintendent. A great lady, great person to work with. And, uh, I'm sure she's still going to be available, uh, consultation. And she is. We spent some time with her socially after last week's meeting, which was good. And, uh, anyone that spends 32 years in any one position deserves kudos and the school, uh, is a great place to have a career and she's done a great job. So I just wanted to mention that. I also, are you on Tammy?
She's probably the key. Come on now. Talk about tomorrow. That's, that's tomorrow, that's right, too.
Right. Um, when we motion to, uh, finish today's meeting, I want to motion for recess subject to the call of the chair due to the end of the year research and anything that might happen at tomorrow's meeting in town. So we're not going to adjourn, but doing a recess, but again, subject to the call of the chair. I don't know that we'll be back to close the books, but it looks like we might not be, but we might be. We need to leave that option open.
You leave it open like that?
Yes, last day of fiscal year.
Okay.
I hadn't think of anything else unless you.
Through you, very quickly, and I, I don't want to put you on the spot. So for the next meeting or when it's appropriate, could we get a couple of reports from our able assistant on some of those legislative, uh, endeavors? We haven't heard for a while how that's making out. Because of the excise revenue, uh, bill.
Yes.
Um, the bill that was filed concerning the solar, uh, thing. And there was something else, like there were three things you were tracking for. Right, before we get sidetracked with, I mean, when you have a chance, right?
Yeah, that's, uh, three minutes to chair, that's, that's timely. Uh, the conference committee is going to intervene for the budget and it's any day. They're waiting for the white smoke. So, uh, by next week, we may have a.
Or even the week after, but whatever, but, you know, I want to hear that report. That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At, at three minutes, Chairman, you, you could, uh, recess till a time certain.
That's what I thought we should do.
Yeah, tomorrow.
We can just recess to next week, Cameron.
Yes, that's what the.
Yeah, usually recess to the meeting of the next week.
But you, uh, you have to be in session tomorrow.
Right, so we have a meeting tomorrow.
Is it 10:00 AM?
It's supposed to be 12:00.
I thought you said 10:00.
Yeah.
Sure, if you want to recess till.
So then always have to be careful when we're done tomorrow, Mr. Chairman. We continue that meeting and recess to the following.
That's fine.
But that's probably the appropriate, that's probably the proper way to do it. Because we are.
Anyway, you say, I know that we do recess this meeting, that's.
I would, I would move that we recess the meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners, uh, until tomorrow, which is July 1, in the time of 12 noon at the place of Toton, uh, Taunton Superior Court. That's all we need.
On the motion to recess till tomorrow, 12 noon, Taunton Superior Court, Alan Feller.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This concludes today's meeting.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mark.